Randy Davis, Mr. Ryan, Lee Franzen, Andy Knapp, and Dennis. All right, you're all here, thank you. And special guest of Kyle Lemera from the Attorney's Office, Mr. Franky. And he will be helping us dive through our wind ordinance and make sure that we have the heart of legal ease.
I hope.
We appreciate that.
Can we get an approval on the agenda?
Anything you need to add to the agenda?
If I had to share, if I would, I would request if I could add a discussion of a letter that was submitted to the township right before, I think it would be appropriate to do it right before old business.
Okay.
To talk about, a little bit about.
Perfect.
Are you going to speak, Malzur?
I will.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
That's it.
All right, so I can now give motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Kyle Lemera with the letter concussed of interest.
I move. All favorited. All right.
Aye.
All opposed? Vote in. We have approval for last month's agenda for minutes. We'll get that. All favorited.
Aye.
All opposed? Vote in. Let me get right down to business. I guess that leaves us to old business, did you want to review that correspondence?
Yes, I would like to review the correspondence. So for the benefit of the planning commission and everybody in the, in the audience, the planning commission as well as the township board received a letter from an attorney, Mr. Josh Nolan, related to vested rights and conflict of interest. So, I'll take the, I'll talk about vested right very quickly because there, I don't think that's a point of contention. The letter argues that Apex would not have vested right in a wind project. So vested right generally means is the right to construct a project when, under current rules. So the point he's trying to make is the township can change zoning regulations. The general thing where you get into a vested right situation is you're changing zoning rules or some sort of land use regulation when there is a, it's kind of the shovel in the dirt test. So if someone starts constructing, construction of a project, you necessarily, you can't necessarily change the rules. That's because there is no, at least to my knowledge, no application for a, a wind project or any other type of development from Apex. I would, you know, I agree with the letter, there is no vested right related to prohibition of changing a wind ordinance or amendments of a zoning ordinance. With that being, with that being said, it, I think that's a relatively moot issue. So, the, the primary rest of the letter relates to conflicts of interest and how to address conflicts of interest. I would say I agree with about ninety-five percent of the letter, with a few distinctions, maybe, maybe even higher than ninety-five percent. So, I think that it, the letter provides a good way for the planning commission to remind itself of what types of authority causes conflicts of interest and how they, how they would generally apply. I'm going to go through it relatively quickly because I, I want to point out the relative, essentially the distinctions that I found in the letter that I, you know, the few areas that I do not agree with, as well as I think there are some additional standards that govern your role as a planning commission member or, or at the township board we're here, township board member. So when we think about conflicts of interest, this isn't referenced in the letter, but every township official has a general fiduciary duty to the township. And what that means is any vote you're making should be in the township's best interest and should not be in a personal interest. So, that's not referenced in the, in the letter, but that's something that each of you should keep in mind when voting or deliberating on any topic. And if you feel like your personal interests are so strongly empowered towards something, you should consider essentially recusing yourself from, from the, from where you, where you feel that way. So that's your fiduciary duty. I won't get into there, there's kind of some more technical legal jargon, duty of care, duty of loyalty, but the general thing is you should be always framed on what you think is best for the township. Second is, there is this thing called the, I shorthand it, called the Standards of Conduct Act. I believe it's the Standards of Conduct for Public Officials and Officers Act. Let's see if it is, I don't, I don't think it's in the time here, but anyways, it's MCL point three four two. It lists a general amount of rules that relate to what public officials can and cannot do. The biggest, the distinction I found in this letter is the letter says it does not apply to planning commission members. And it says the planning enabling act only applies to planning commission members, I think it talks about on page two, Maple Valley planning commission members are not covered by MCL fifteen point three four two. That is not the case. MCL fifteen point three four two, the definition, a public officer includes an appointed official. So it includes elected and appointed. So it's my opinion that it actually applies to the planning commission. Biggest things there that you should be aware of is, let's go to my site here, that would come up in the context of truly any land use and, you know, wind use if there, if there is an application to, to be, towards the, the planning commission. But there's, MCL fifteen, the first, there's three, there's three things that come up a lot. A public official or employee should not solicit or accept a gift or loan of money or goods of value that would have the tendency to impact judgment. Second is a public group or official or employee should not engage a business transaction where they may profit from his or her position. And the third is, public officers should not basically participate in negotiation of contracts or permits that, when you have a financial or personal interest. So, I, I would say keep those three in mind. These are statutory, these are in statute and they have been incorporated in your bylaws. So your bylaws generally review these standards. I do want to just remind you of the standards, just, just in case. And this, the purpose of this discussion is one, to point out what I think is, is not applied, or what is distinctive in this letter, but then also to build dialogue is, if you, if you think you have a conflict of interest, I would, I would, like, I think the most appropriate thing to do would be to come to me and, and we can talk through it. Because I understand conflicts of interest are relatively a personal matter and it's not always intuitive. And this is something I should mention, is conflict of interest law in Michigan is very, I would say undefined. There are very few cases, if any, that define the Standards of Conduct Act as it relates to local government officials. I think there might be none. There is very few, there's, there's some general law about the fiduciary duty, so there's a, the most recent case there is about from, at least from my research, is around 2004. And then those, those cases build off of cases from like the, from around the eighteen hundreds. So that's the Standards of Conduct Act, general gist of it is it would apply to the planning commission. The second is that it, these are the, the three things that generally come up. The third source of conflict of interest analysis, if you, if you are reviewing conflicts of interest would be your bylaws. So I do agree with the, the letter here, that talks about your bylaws. One thing that the bylaws does is talks about what is called the rule necessity in the event that a quorum is lost from the, the planning commission related to conflicts of interest. That, that is something that is basically a legal doctrine that says if there, if you can't have quorum of a public body and you have responsibility to do a task, you can name your conflict, basically in the public and then report your duties. Because it would be an absurd result if, you know, you just couldn't do something. So that's, that's, that's the Belt of the Case Law. And generally, that would be it. The last distinction I have is, so this talks about how the Standards of Conduct Act could impose criminal penalties on the planning commission and township boards, should they violate it? You know, you should not violate that. That's the, that's the simple, that's the simple answer. It does not, it does not apply criminal penalties. It applies several penalties, namely applying. And that's, that's what I wanted to do to address conflicts of interest. I'd have to address any questions from the planning commission as it relates to conflicts of interest and, and your role. But otherwise, you know, this is something that the township is also analyzing and, and soliciting more feedback from me.
Carol? Is there anybody who's got any questions on that? I got one, does that, so that means anybody on, let's see, somebody on the board here has already decided a lease without, that would be a conflict of interest.
So it depends on the situation. It depends, one, what you're voting on. So if you're voting on a wind project that relates to a wind development by that same developer, yes, that would be, in my opinion, a conflict of interest that would require refusal and if, and abstaining from deliberation of the matter. In terms of, this is, this is an area of law that is, there's not, there's sort of prefaces, there's not a lot of guidance, but at least from my research and, and my opinion is, if you have a lease, you would be able to vote on ordinance of general applicability in the township which could regulate wind turbines for a number of reasons. There's case law that talks about how remote interests, even if someone does have an interest in something, when they apply to generally the public as a whole, would not constitute actual conflict of interest. There's case law there. The second would be the absurd result and kind of going back into that theory, I don't want to get into the textual statutory arguments applying to Standards of Conduct Act because they get very technical and I don't, I don't know if I'm going to stay here or not, but they, the, the second is the, if you think about that concept. So if you, let's say you own a farm. So this, this is something that, you know, there's an argument that gets brought up a lot, especially in the wind context of, you know, if you have some sort of, you know, wind lease, can you vote on wind ordinance? Well, let's say you own a farm and you are considering a zoning amendment related to the agricultural district, which could in some ways, you know, produce setbacks, which may give you a indirect benefit, but also applies to the rest of the township. That, that, that issue does not come up. You, you don't see it. Same if you own a single family dwelling, you're, you're amending a zoning ordinance for the residential district. You're reducing setbacks, you're allowing different things to be built in the residential district. So there's kind of two, there's fat, there's facets. There's some general applicability, the, the other facet is that the, you know, the zoning enabling act comes, and I think everybody is aware, it has a direct democracy component of it, so if you pass an ordinance that people do not like, there is a referendum opportunity to refer on the, referendum the ordinance. I have not found case law, that would be precedential, that would say if you have, you cannot basically vote on an ordinance of general applicability because of what I would say is, under the remote, the remote interest doctrine. But with that being said, your fiduciary duties govern you in that situation. So if you have a wind lease and you do not believe that you can act in the best interest of the township, let's say you think, I want to create a wind ordinance that would make it as easy as possible for wind to be developed, that's my only intent, that's why I'm making this decision, then I would say, yes, you should abstain. So it can, it depends on the facts and it also depends on the person. Conflicts of interest are a very case by case, actual specific, basically analysis. And that's why, you know, I, I would recommend if you have any questions, especially because conflicts of interest are, you know, they're, they're relatively private conversations, I would ask, you know, you the supervisor, come to me directly myself and we can, you know, put you in touch with, you know, you can disclose information that you may, you know, feel uncomfortable disclosing in public and then we can talk about, talk through it and then determine whether you should be disclosing that to the public.
Anybody else got any questions? Thank you, Carol, we appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. I think that was a, you know, the letter was a, I agree with, like I said, probably ninety-five percent of the things in the letter. I, there are a few distinctions that I have with the letter, but it also brings up a very good exercise and a lot, that a lot of, I think the planning commissions and township boards don't necessarily have is discussions going into conflicts of interest. Because it's, it's one of the more, I, I kind of geek out, I guess, on, on this, this type of area of the law, but it's a, it's one of the more complex areas, areas of the law and it's not tested a lot in courts.
All right, nobody else has got any other questions? I do have one on which is the revised draft that women are going to offer, we've only got three different ones that we're going to try to do here.
So your revised draft. I think the easiest way to do this, Roger, and the way that I did this before the meeting is if you go to page three, it'll say single wax for onsite use only, it's highlighted. I think in the prior draft, it's not highlighted?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
And I don't know how you would like to start this, if you would like to just ask me questions directly or ask you to deliberate the ordinance yourself, or if you would like me to summarize basically the changes that we have put in the ordinance, but I'm happy to do anything that's helpful for the planning.
Sorry, I was.
No, we're just making your, our, our, looking at the.
Could you repeat what you just said?
I, I, certainly. I said, if, I am happy to go about this anyway, like, if you would like me to summarize the changes that were made to what I would say the original township wind ordinance was, I can do that. We can also ask, if you have questions about the document in front of you and you'd like to just ask me, we can have had a Q and A, because I do know that you met last month and Chris was here and I think you might have talked about a little number of those topics. I would, I, that's another way we can do it. The last way, the, the one thing I do want to say is I think we want to talk about an issue related to what I would call a personal turbine, so not a utility turbine, because what I found is in the last ordinance, that your existing zoning ordinance, that, that use is already defined and we should, we should, like, we should discuss whether you want to amend that or leave it the same that is existing in the zoning ordinance. And for the benefit of planning commission, I did have a variety of definition changes, some of, some of which were because the template used terms that weren't used in the ordinance, but just deleted those for rebuilding. The second is, it used terms, some terms that were already defined in the zoning ordinance. You don't want to have, you don't want to have definition that.
And that was what I was going to discuss with Chris was to get rid of redundancy.
Yes, and that, and that's, that can happen and that, there's, to be quite honest, in my experience, when you go in different townships, you will see zoning ordinances that have redundancy and it makes it very difficult to hide them.
Hard to negotiate.
Does anybody have any objections? We've just gone over the changes we have made. Would you like to walk us through that?
Sure.
That sounds good. All right. Thanks for being our speaker today.
So, well, I, I'm going to frame this from where the ordinance that was rescinded, I think in March, how we came from that. And we, we generally worked out that model, but we moved, added a lot of content, so it is not, I would say it's not very, very close to being the same, but it, it does kind of follow the same formatting in some ways. So, the changes that, that you all, that you all made and that we're discussing is, I'll do, I'll do it by topics, we might jump around. So, go to page ten. I shouldn't do it in order, but, page ten, we added a continuing enforcement, actually it's on page eleven, a continuing enforcement escrow deposit.
Yes.
So this would require, if there were to be a wind development, that they would have, there would be monies available to ensure that it is meeting the ordinance standards. This would include noise standards, shadow clicker standards. So the, the intent of this is, five or six years down the line, you think a turbine is loud, if there was a development even built, that there would be monies available for the township to investigate that. And because the fractal matters for most townships would have, they would not have the resources to do that on their own. And it is that, from my, from my experience with this, it is very expensive, believe it or not, to determine accurately the sound that something is generating. That is the first change that was not in the original. The second.
That also included the resolution part for public turn, so that if there's a third party that's got to be brought in.
Correct.
That's where that comes in.
Correct. So yes, no, it's, it would allow a third party or an expert to do it. So wouldn't, wouldn't that necessarily have to be Roger or Andy?
Maybe so we would have the funds to hire a third party.
Yes, right, yes.
To come out and do these things for us.
Yes, and I would recommend, I would strong, I would extremely recommend that because you would want to, you would not want to do that on your own. So, the, on page five, and stop me if you have questions, which I think you all are doing, is application escrow count. Basically, this would say, if you did receive an application, that an applicant would be required to essentially fund the necessary experts that you would need to hire, which would be likely, and, well, a planner and an attorney and, and anyone else, to determine basically whether an application meets the standards in your, in your ordinance. That is in addition.
Now, we did put in here that we had wanted a minimum of their, at what, which, what part did you put that?
So I, I changed that to basically not put the minimum. And the reason why I did that, Andy, is if you look at, there is a non-refundable application fee which can be set by the township board. And generally, I do not like putting static numbers in the zoning ordinance because years, so it, it happens more in legislation honestly than it happens in zoning ordinances, but like, let's say you put $10,000 and then $10,000 in 20 years doesn't give you anything. That's why I like, I like to give discretion and kind of lead abroad, so you would.
So that would be something we would set down.
Yes, you would, you would.
At the application process that we determine at that time, because we probably have to get quotes from whatever experts we want to bring in.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's exact, that's exactly right. So that's, that's the reason.
That's acceptable then.
Yep. So I, so that, and that's sort of, it's not very, like, it doesn't seem like common sense to not put, not put down sometimes and, and sometimes draft things broader, but it actually is more helpful because it gives more flexibility to the planning commission and township. Okay, so that is our application escrow. On page five, complaint resolution plan, that is something that was not in the original ordinance and that is not in the Grasset County model. They do not have a provision that talks about the complaint resolution plan, at least in some of the, in some instances. And, but I will say in, you could always impose a condition requiring complaint resolution plan. But this spells out basically, if there were a project, there would have to be a complaint resolution plan to basically detail, if the public has complaints, they would be able to have those developer, either address them, developer or operator, address them and they, the complaints would have to be reported to the township, so if they aren't addressed by the, the wind operator or developer, that the township could use that enforcement escrow to enforce it themselves. Generally, you do like that to be the, the first step because in, in most townships you have limited, generally they have the resources to deal with complaints, I think initially better than, than the, than a township. Going to page ten, there is what is a continuing decommissioning security. And what this basically says, if a special land use permit would be approved for a project, like a wind project, and it was approved and, and it was, it was approved, then the township would require that the developer or operator deposits money available to make sure that at the end of the project, that the project is decommissioned, which means basically removed. What it does is it, here again, and I, I can't remember if in the original draft there was a dollar figure, but it removed that to basically allow that on the discretion because you want your, you want your experts that you hired, what, in, in initial stages to determine what's an appropriate amount, generally it's per turbine, they'll come out with, with a number. So that is the continuing decommissioning security section. Page seven, it is here, our shadow clicker changes from the federal ordinance. So basically, shadow clicker to any occupied property, no more than 30 hours per year unless it is on a non-participating lot. No shadow clicker on non-participating lots measured from the lot line. And then also waiver provision is, you get the instance that someone, the contractor is well, shadow clicker they get.
Excuse me, can I steal that too?
Absolutely. No, you're fine.
I have a golden ticket. She just left everything inside now.
Page seven, lighting and ADLS. This ordinance would require an ADLS aircraft detection lighting system that would essentially keep the flashing red lights on the ordinances off amongst the aircraft nearby. It is my understanding that there is a pro, well, I know there is a project in Grasset County that has an ADLS. I'm, I'm aware of a project, I believe it's a school accounting that will have, that will have ADLS, but there is precedent for such requirements in, in Michigan and the FAA has approved ADLS systems, so I believe that. When I started looking into this, there's four of them, but there could be more by now, so, ADLS. Page nine, liability insurance. This is essentially a, this does have a floor, but it talks about how a wind developer would have to, basically during construction, actually during the entire length of the project, have that liability insurance policy to protect the township from claims, from damages to persons or property that are related to the, the wind project. It's not like, you know, a free for all, but it would be related to the project. Going to setbacks, that would be starting on page eight.
You're getting soft here.
I don't have any water, so I'm supposed to be dry. Going to page eight, there is a 1.5 times tip height occupied building that is not locating on a non-participating lot, three times tip height from non-participating lot, lot line, lake setback, half mile from a number of lakes. I, I do believe it's from the master plan, I, I haven't seen the master plan, so I don't know.
I am getting papi's made of, you know, like, you know, like, your, your papi's, we only have one papi currently.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful because outside of this context, when you're using a special land permit, generally you should put that master plan.
And I wanted to add a couple of things after looking at that, we were quite vague on that. And I'd like to make sure that we put wording in there that when we measure, that is not from like the center of the lake, I wanted to make sure that we say that it is from, if there's a residential area around it, that we should be measuring from the outermost of that residential area, from that property line out. Because up in, it's Isabel County, Coldwater, their project up there, they measure from the center of the lake. And I can tell you right now, after looking at all the complaints of, up there, and one of them came from my cousin who actually lives there and has a cottage on Coldwater Lake, she sent me a picture and said, hey, make sure that this doesn't happen to you guys, because they didn't define it.
Thank you.
So I think that's something that we should have in their language that defines that it's from, if it has residential development on there, it should be from the outer edge of residential development, you know, some may jump out further than others, so that's why you have to be, you know, because somebody may have a larger lot than the person on the south end of the lake. And I think we need to put on there also that it should be, if the, if the lake has designated wetland from the National Wetland Association, you know, from federal, that it should be measured from the outskirts of them as well.
Okay.
Because I.
It makes trouble with the federal and the federal law.
But I don't think it hurts to have it also states in there.
So, I, to understand, I, I understand the first point completely and I think we should have some deliberate, if, if any of the other planning measures number one, first point. The second point, I, I just want to ask you a question to see, you know, to help me understand what you're at. Is it an aesthetic concern from the wetland or is it an environmental concern to make sure that something is not built close to a wetland?
Both.
Okay. Okay, so that answered it, that answered.
I think it's both and I think also, I mean, obviously, just for soil contamination and for the preservation of those wetlands, is I was looking at, and I'll share with you guys, I don't have internet in here, but I was looking at the National Wetland mapping and I zoomed in on Maple Valley Township and looking at it and just seeing what was around the lakes that we had named in here. And that's what got me thinking about that, just looking at that. And this is from, you know, they're designated by the federal government. So I just wanted to make sure that that was covered in here as well. I know that we have a little something blipped in here about wetlands.
So I, my thought, my general thought on the wet, I, I, I understand the concept of the lake setback from, into the lake, that makes sense to me, but we'd have to take the census of the planning. Or, you know, it, and it's, it's generally a policy, you know, it's a policy here and that's, you know, your role to determine.
Yep.
The policy. From the wetland, my, my. From the wetlands, my, my biggest concern with that, Andy, would be that there are wetlands that are not on lakes and on rivers that would be relatively isolated, that you would be basically imposing.
And some of that was covered under here, but I wanted to, because some of those, like, like I said, I just wanted to use it specifically. Because the other wetlands are covered in this other previous portion in our ordinance under, oh. So, it's on page six where it covers wetlands from the MCL.
Yes, and, and what that, so, I am not an engineer and you'd be very thankful that I'm not an engineer. But at least in my experience doing basic land use and development, what part three of three will, there's, you know, the regulated wetlands. And the general gist of that is, that is more or less, that, that, those are tailored towards environmental concerns to make sure. So, I think the state has a promulgated standard of whether you can build in a wetland or whether you need to be away from it. So, that, I, I think that's just for context. So, I, I, I think we should discuss as a group whether, I think, issue one. Issue two, and you might wanna think about, I, I'm happy to go with the, the, the planning commission. I just, I would be a little cautious to regulate setbacks from what, so, to read a case that was lost for, we talked about how sometimes like a puddle can be a wetland. So, that, that's, that's the, that's the kind of result we get.
That's why I was, that's why I was looking at this very specific theory. This is federally documented.
Yeah, so a federal wetland can be a puddle. That's, no, well, that's, I, I, that's one, that's one, essentially, it could be throughout the township. I, I don't, it doesn't, I, I think it's a policy decision that you should all take, I don't.
I guess my biggest thing was making sure that how we measure them, like I said, especially because the point was is to make sure that when you go to, for instance, on a lake, and it, you need to be, you're very vague here. So, you need to make sure, you have clear language inside states that if there is a residential development, that it needs to be from the outermost end of that.
And that's a, that's a good thought. And that's a way that we could potentially bypass, I think, two of these issues is you could have an overlay of, you know, this would be instead of, instead of making this in your ag district, you could make an overlay wind district that would be, you know, putting your ag district plus other lands or other, removing other lands. But then you would carve out areas around the lakes. That would be, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be, because it's very hard to put that in text. If you, if you think about it, putting it in text from the closest residential development, it takes a lot of interpretation and it might not be future proof. So, a map in those situations would be.
So, we could add a map to this that states, like this map?
My problem is that some of these lakes don't even have some houses on them or.